I walked out and forgot my computer. I enjoyed it so little that I remember my computers.
I'll leave you to it.
I'm, I can't hear.
Can you hear us now?
There, now I can. Yes. Thank you.
Somebody said we heard your mic on and so we were just, please don't say anything bad about us while your mic is on.
Never.
He was wondering whether to ask on the same.
He did repeat that joke twice. And then he just kind of fell flat the second time.
Just still find him at the first time, too.
Why? Why Amber?
Because it's stuck in her craw.
It's not new material, but I'm not sure about it.
It sounded like my dad joke yesterday.
You sound like my kid. Dad.
It's always best when you make the joke and then ask for affirmation that it was good or not good. That's how you know, yeah. Yeah, what do you think? I actually like that joke.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We've got a fairly, sounds like a straightforward meeting tonight, and so hopefully that will be able to get through. But if you have questions, obviously they've got some good conversation. We have Jai here, one of our former councilors. So you thought ready, or do you want to give a few more minutes? Take your time. We're going to do a follow-up, so you're good. Okay. Meeting follow-up. Does anybody have anything that they would like to discuss from the last meeting? Anything to that relation?
Issue, concerns, anything like that? Just a quick, if I could, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to everybody who was able to come to the, to the wastewater treatment plant work session, if you will. I know not everybody could, but good discussion and hopefully some good information was purveyed. For those that couldn't attend, if, if you, if you want to sit down, we can certainly do that. Councilor Bond or Councilor Larson and even Councilor Jensen, of course she's not here yet. So that's open for y'all as well. And that's really all I have. Yeah. Anybody else have anything? Do I need to do some filler?
We got two. Well, I can't do any more jokes. Amber told me not to.
Go to the next item and then come back to the first item.
Perfect. Yeah. Is Council okay with that? Okay, perfect. All right. So let's go ahead and go to three requests for congressional directed spending. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. This is the, the, the opportunity that we try to take every year with regard to requests that the Congresswoman might be willing to entertain from the city of Casper. You'll recall that it was this program that we were able to get funding for police cars last time around. We were also able to get funding for the North Pla, excuse me, the North Platte Interceptor Sewer. We, we were on the precipice of receiving funding for fire equipment that somehow got derailed, but we'd like to take another run at some, some needs that we have as an organization that potentially the Congresswoman would hear. So we don't want to get ahead of you, however, as far as that request goes. And so for that review, I'd like to turn the time over to Pete to walk us through what those requests would entail. Feel free to ask any questions that you would have or any other input that you want to provide. That's why we're here tonight.
Pete, thank you.
Welcome.
I'm Mr. Mayor, City Manager. Yes, as the manager mentioned, this is the congressionally directed spending, which is a program that the federal government allows for members of Congress to basically push certain requests to the front. It basically allows us to go through a grant program that currently exists within Congress, but it allows us to get a first bite at the apple of service if the member of Congress is willing to support. And then if we get support also from various congressional committees that have to be included. It also depends a lot on the functioning of our national Congress, which is sometimes, you know, sometimes erratic. Certainly, if Congress doesn't get around to passing a budget or if there's many changes, then anything we get through this process may be reduced or changed or so on so forth. But with all that being said, this is a way to get involved in those programs and hopefully to get some funding. And as the city manager mentioned, you've had a little bit of success with this these years. We'd like to keep, keep those opportunities going because it's always best to get whatever we can from these sorts of things. This year, we are intending to ask with Kansas Glassing for six different allocations. One of them is for basic stormwater production, stormwater collection and flood prevention. This one stands out, at least in my mind, because does not, this request did not originate in public services department. It originally originated in the fire department. One of the fire chiefs brought this up as a concern because certain many other cities across the country have been having flooding issues, especially Kentucky. This has been an issue where we need to be thinking about this as well. Certain fire departments involve control of the rest. Our secondary request is for improvements at the Stuckin' Off Shooting Range as far as for, for police department safety and police department technology. This is presumably coming from what's called the COPS program. We do, we have gotten a federal grant to the COPS program before, but this will be a way to, to help improve safety. Certainly, the city office is not used just for training. It's used for many other law enforcement agencies across the state. Hopefully, that will get some attention. Generally speaking, this one is for police technology in general. It's been the trend with these departments to have, there's a lot more information available as far as ways to collect information via body cameras or other kinds of surveillance and internet. And so this would be a way to generalize request information for technology that would help us to collect and also to assimilate and understand that information. It's not, okay, it's nice to have a lot of information for purposes of public safety, but it's also necessary to keep up top of hand and analyze in some way that makes it useful for public safety. This would be a way to try to get a grant that would help us to do that. On that, it's covered parking for the buses. This is something that has been brought up by the FTA for us several times, the Federal Transit Administration. They've been concerned about exactly how we store the buses at the corner of Beverly. There's, they're already in a locked facility, but the gate would be upgraded and then also be a covering put over the top so that the buses don't get out. This is how it's going to come, which hopefully will make things a little bit nicer towards the buses, especially in terms of fact. These are federally funded buses and they want to make sure that they last. So anything we can do to get a grant to help protect that investment, I think would be definitely supported by the general program. On that, there's Robertson Road. The idea of trying to improve the road and also improve capacity. There have been a number of traffic concerns on the recently, specifically the bridge and other parts of the proposed development in that area that the neighbors have been concerned about traffic. So this would be hopefully a way to do a program that would do something to improve traffic flows on that road so that the volume to developing in that area. And then last but not least is the North Platte Sanitary Sewer. As the city manager mentioned, we did get a near market for North Platte Sanitary Sewer once previously. This is an ongoing project. We've seen the details that the total project, it's about $40 million. We can't request that much for a single request, but certainly hope that they would be willing to give us some. As, as you, where North Platte Sanitary Sewer is a pipe that is very large, it's supposed to collect all the waste water from the west end of town. It's, it is dissolving inside out. Certainly, we had a sinkhole, major sinkhole in there just a few weeks ago, still dealing with. And so we've already used slip grants and used other things, SRF loans to help mitigate that and to do sections at a time. This would be another section. Everything we can do on that, we can. So hopefully, the federal cost will be able to really dispose of that.
Awesome. Any questions for Pete on these requests? Yep. Go ahead, Kyle.
I guess I was hoping for a little bit more information. I'm totally good on flood prevention, on the live firing range, on the sewer, and sort of the core stuff that we need. I was looking for more information, hopefully from the chief or someone else in regards to the police technology. I'd like to know a little bit more about what that entails. And then the Robertson Road widening and stuff, I guess I would want to know if we already have, does the MPO long range transportation plan or something else already explain like what sort of research has been done? I'm just a little hesitant to do road expansion. I don't want to just keep adding lanes to an area to accommodate more traffic. I just feel like in general, you know, I just have hesitation for widening streets just because it seems like that's been done for decades in lots of other cities. It's just wide streets and traffic will always find a way to fill those, that, that capacity. And that area kind of has a very pedestrian feel to it. So I wouldn't want it to get, especially if we add the bridge over there and stuff, I wouldn't want it to get too, you know, congested or dangerous for pedestrians. But Chief, if you speak to the tech.
Sure. Do you, do you have a specific question, councilor?
So I guess my question would be, what, what exactly do you see us using that funding for? Just so you know where I'm at personally, I'm totally fine with sort of maintaining current body cam technology and storage and all of those things, but I am hesitant to, I was a little hesitant when we got the one drone the last time, although I recognize that it sounds like it was pretty instrumental in apprehending someone a couple of months ago when there was a high-speed chase. So I, I understand its value, but I just, I really don't want our police department, which to me should be like community policing. I don't want, I was against the armored vehicle. I don't want to have a bunch of drones whizzing up in the air. I don't want like a, I, I would want to understand like how we see virtual reality and some of these other things. It just, to me, it feels like I don't want our community police department to get more militaristic in that sense, if that makes any sense.
Thank you for that question, by the way. So really what it boils down to for the, for the drones is there, there's some capability out there that would allow drones to be first responders if they were to launch from dispatch where dispatch personnel could actually launch that drone depending on what the incident's going on. And depending on where they're staged in and out around the community, they could get there within 90 seconds, hover to certain elevation and kind of give us real-time information. Once officers got on scene, one of our licensed pilots, drone pilots could actually log in and say, okay, now I have control over this, bring it down to a reasonable flight deck if, if need be, and try to track somebody. We've used drones to look for all manner of things from missing kids to, to including recently the gentleman that was doing all the property damage. So they're, they're, they're a great tool because they don't have to stop at traffic lights. They don't have to stop for pedestrians in the roadway. They're just a great response for, you know, I don't want to speak for Chief Black, but they could be used for fire department operating. During the eclipse, we were the first agency in the state, law enforcement agency in the state that deployed drones and we had drones up in the air monitoring crowds, things like that. And so some of the other technology, if I've answered that question appropriately.
Yes.
Would help us. There's video cameras everywhere. We don't currently have the technology. We have some great people in, in-house that will get a video from somebody shoplifting. So there isn't a day that goes by that we don't get some shoplifting complaint from Walmart or Target or something like that where we get an image of somebody. And then we go out to the parking lot and look at this and we try to, you know, it's not as easy as ants. Enhance, they're generally blurry. But that technology would also help us maybe apprehend these folks a little quicker, especially when you have larger shoplifting rigs coming in and around town and bang on the community like that. So those are some of the things that we're looking to capitalize on.
Thank you. Is that a Super Trooper reference I heard?
Appreciate you picking that up.
I really appreciate that context. And it totally makes sense. You know, you gave some great examples why these things could be really helpful and valuable. I guess a follow, so I'm just like going into this next budget discussion. I think I've already voiced like where I'm going to be coming from, which is I think the city needs to turtle in some respects, just really protect its core services that it's doing and not get a bit more, you know, this is, this sounds like the type of policing that we haven't done and would be kind of an expansion of our services. And I totally understand the efficiencies it might provide. I wonder if, you know, we're budgeted for a certain amount of officers. I wonder if with these advancements in technology, do you see it as potentially supplementing the force to the extent that we could potentially budget for a couple of less positions? Or I just want to, you know, because I know this is going to require 20% match. And so if we get the full $3 million, that's $600,000 that if it doesn't come out of, maybe it would come out of the current PD budget. But I would just hate to see like one cent asks or something along this regard in the future to cover an expansion of services. Maybe you can speak a little bit more to that.
Yeah, I don't think this, thank you for that question, but I don't believe this replaces, I wouldn't want to go down in staffing because you still need to have, pardon the analogy, but boots on the ground to go get their hands dirty, for lack of a better word. So this provides us for an aerial view for the body more cameras. Some of that technology, that expense is getting greater when you have storage in the cloud. That is, that's another operating expense. The modern digital, digital forensic piece, that is our, kind of our ICAC or our guy that takes the phones and the computers and laptops and goes through those. We need to have the infrastructure in place across the street so we're ever more digital as a community. And those are some of the other, this helps offset some of those other costs. Those computers to do that kind of work are not cheap. That software's not cheap. And so it's going to cover all of those things and make us, give us greater opportunities to kind of combat some of those things that are.
Go ahead.
Thanks so much, Chief. So I guess for further clarification for myself, do you see the 20% match? Would that be coming from funds that were already budgeted for the police department for tech-related purposes and we're simply multiplying the, the impact of those existing funds? Or is it funds that we would need to procure elsewhere? That's my question.
I really don't have the answer for that. I would prefer to see if we can find it somewhere else other than our budget.
Mr. Mayor, councillor, I, I would agree that we would likely need to turn to other resources in order to leverage that, that what I would consider very favorable grant opportunity.
I just, I want to be mindful. I know Steve's not on the board anymore, but I don't want to give a tentative go-ahead right now and then, you know, pull back later and get admonished for it. So, so yeah, I don't know. I guess I'm a little hesitant about that one, hearing that the funding would need to come from alternative sources. I just, I totally understand. You make a very compelling case, Chief, and I'm not going to dispute the fact that it'd make the department more efficient and safer for officers and stuff, which is why I am hard-pressed to be hesitant about it. But yeah, again, I'm, I'm hoping we can turtle a little bit just because I think we're in a very kind of unpredictable environment and I just want to make sure the absolute core essential stuff that we're doing, we can fund that completely. Streets, I'm going to be advocating that we, you know, I know we're behind in streets again as far as keeping up with inflationary costs and stuff. And so, so that, that's my only hesitation about it at this present moment, not, not saying that there's value in it.
Mr. Schweene.
Thank you, Mayor. So Pete, did you work on this the last time?
The last, the last time we requested?
Yeah. So what, what was the, if you remember, what was the total?
The total that we requested?
Fact, yeah, fact, yeah.
So in the previous round, I don't think I'll be able to accurately list the total, but I do remember we did ask for, we asked for, yes, for police cars, which is still in play. Hopefully, that one still comes through. We don't, we don't, we asked for. We asked for support for the fire station number one, that was not successful. Asked for support for, what do you think, we asked for support for, I believe it was Talon Drive, for street work there, that was not successful. So I believe those were the things that we did. And so, so at the time, at this current moment, the federal government has not yet completely, we said no to us on our request for police cars. So hopefully that one still comes through.
So do we think the list is too much or go for it and vote for the best?
So let's, is that a direct question to me, Counselor? Or is that kind of just kind of in the ether? Yeah, so, so I would say let's, if there's any more questions, I want you to hold that thought. If there's any more questions for Pete or Chief around this, we can move into maybe discussion phase.
Just, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question, I guess this would be, well, it's maybe for the city manager or, you know, jail, I don't know, but I think Counselor Gamroth raises a good question about all six of the proposals, in terms of matching, is that 20%, or rather, yeah, is it 20% match? Does that apply to the flood prevention as well as the live firing range improvements, the covered parking, the Robertson Road, you know, those other five projects?
Thank you, Counselor Vaughn, yes, I can at least try to address that question. The short answer is kind of. The, the way this works is that there are actually a number of different funding opportunities, to be specific, I believe there are 17 of them, that, that each of these could theoretically be thrown into and there's a certain amount of mixing and matching that goes on. So for example, with the flood control, arguably that could apply to a certain kind of program which deals with, I'll call it pipe programs, like water and wastewater, but it could also be applied to FEMA programs like, I'm sure about emergency management. And sometimes that is up to the congressperson as to which program they want, you can make the request to the congress member, but then they would be the one who would actually suggest that they would be willing to submit it as a, as a public safety program or as an infrastructure program, as the case may be. So, so it is sometimes a little bit hard for us to be 100% sure of what the match is going to be. Certainly some, sometimes there are some programs which are 0% match, but, but I would be, I would be very hesitant to make that promise to Counsel at this time.
Sure.
It's appropriate to be prepared for an award and have a match.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess again, just to kind of piggyback off the comments that have already been made, that I think before we move forward with any of those projects and the specific funding for each of those six categories, I think that, just again, given the situation that we're maybe facing here, that I think that the match is going to be, it's going to be a big question in my mind at least, especially if a lot of the worst case scenario things come true with our budgeting. So anyway, if there's, if there's the option of, of answering that question before we actually move, move forward with the, with the Congressional Representative Hegeman to actually apply for those monies, I think we better have a good idea where that match is going to come from if it's, if it is required.
Mr. City Manager, have a sound.
Yeah, just a real quick contribution, hopefully that's helpful. Certainly Counselor and Counselors, we, when it comes to congressionally directed spending, generally what that means is, that is with regard to the discretionary funds that the Congresswoman has at her disposal, which typically does not require a match. There are those times, however, where we're directed to go into a program that would be a competitive program that typically entails a match. So without a doubt, my suggestion would be that if the match is the component of this that would, you know, trip us up enough to where we'd rather not go forward, maybe the answer would be to help us prioritize those pieces of this request that you'd like to see move forward, so that, so that at the very least, we can try to match those requests with what we've seen those discretionary funds applied to in the past and, and potentially avoid match kinds of discussions altogether. So I guess that would be the offer that I would extend for Counsel to consider so that we could be a little more strategic and hopefully successful in avoiding the programmatic type suggestions that typically require some level of match.
So clarification, so Carter, if tonight we said, okay, look, let's look at, you know, okay, let's move forward, start doing this, and then we can kind of step back and say, okay, look, these are the matches for certain areas that we don't want to risk?
Right.
Is that what you're, is that what you're kind of suggesting?
I think so.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Okay. Any other question? Oh yeah, Michael.
How long does it take to get an answer on this?
Be off Council.
That's what I was.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, that's a fair question too. When it comes to the discretionary funds that the Congresswoman has at her disposal and if she supports what we're looking for, we typically get an answer turned around relatively quickly, but I would say by this time next year, we would know if we were in business with regard to what our request ends up being. When it comes to the programs that we have to go through, there are definitely times where we have to take multiple shots at the same program in order to get potentially what we're, what we're looking for. And sometimes even at that, even if we're still in the first iteration, we're, we're put off over time because of the level of bureaucracy that we have to traverse. So that tends to be a little less, you know, concise in terms of the timeframe that we can expect.
Any other questions for Pete or Chief? Okay, let's kind of move into the discussion phase. So, thank you guys, appreciate it. So Pat raised the question of, if you'd want to repeat that, Pat, because my brain's not firing in all synapses.
Not oxygen.
Come on, Pat.
So basically, I think, my opinion is the worst case scenario is about 3.4 million in match, worst case, but if there's zero programs, you know, out there, but I, no, my feeling would be to move forward with all of them. And then I don't know what it looks like to the Congresswoman if you, two years from now, you know, say, oh, we can't afford that at this point in time.
Is that a concern?
I think it's a great point.
Okay.
Yeah, that's pretty much my concern is, well, not only trying to avoid admonishment from your chair, but also I would not want our representative to stick their neck out to seek this funding and then us kind of walk it back and say, oh no, nevermind, that 20% is too much, like I would, I would just like us to know if we can commit to that. I understand it might be two years down the road, some of us might not even be on Council, but I think if she is putting her neck out at all to ask for these things, we need to make at least that verbal commitment among the staff group that we would be willing to, you know, satisfy whatever our obligations are. And so that's where my hesitation comes from is, you know, especially in light of what we're seeing in regards to the state legislature, potential cuts to our budget coming down from there, I don't think we can talk about, you know, potential cuts to what we would consider essential services or personnel while also adding drones and VR and stuff, I just, I think the optics of that would be.
So Carter?
I think Counselor.
Oh, sorry, man.
Well, I, well, no, thank you, I just kind of, I kind of halfway wanted to ask a question. But I backed down because I, yeah, no, just going off what Counselor Gamroth was saying, I just, I just had a quick thought in my head, I was thinking maybe, I mean, should we maybe go through the prioritization procedure first before we ask? If that's a real concern of, like you say, well, I don't want to do that, you know, that's too much now, so, I don't know, maybe that's just something to think about.
Carter, was the possibility of kind of taking a, watching, wait, or do we need to get this moving forward right away?
Mr. Mayor, as it relates to submitting a request for the funds that the Congresswoman has, you know, access to or direction over, et cetera, that needs to happen sooner than later. As it relates to the programmatic funds that we may end up pursuing with Counsel's blessing, each of those have their own individual timeframes that the program dictates.
So is it fair to say that we would have time to look at kind of what Matt was suggesting and everybody else, to look at it from a more pragmatic approach and saying, okay, what does our budget look like, what are we looking at in the next couple of years? What could happen in July once we know more, actually we'll know more in a couple of days probably, what that looks like? Does that make sense, Carter?
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, I never want to put the Council in a position of saying, answer me now or never, you know, so I would absolutely say, with the, with the time that you may need to think about this further, staff will support that, absolutely. My hope would be that if indeed we, we do want to pursue some funds that the Congresswoman directs, that maybe we could prioritize those requests sooner than later so that we can get in on the timeframe that that is dictated by. On the other hand, you know, we would understand if none of these are appealing to you as well and, and that type of direction is something we anticipate may be an outcome too, so. So yes, but if we do, I would suggest let's at least have it in one of the next successive meetings so that we could have some direction that we could run with.
I'd be fine to punt it to another session, but I'd also be fine to just submit these six, see what she picks up and then we have another decision point if we proceed with any, if she says no to all of them, then we have another decision point about pursuing grants that do have a match, hers are 0% match, right? So there's no, I don't think there's a lot of harm in asking for those elements and then if it's yes to one and no to the other five, then we can come back and develop strategy or say it's not worth it to the other five or whatever the case may be, but if, if she wants to prioritize any of these in her discretionary funding, I don't think I'd be like, please don't give us that.
Yeah, good point. So kind of hearing a couple of different thoughts, what is Counsel feeling? I heard some trepidation, so Amber said, hey, she's comfortable with waiting for a couple of weeks for the next work session because that's probably what you would like.
Sure.
Does Counsel want to meet in the middle and say, we'll wait the two weeks to kind of digest a little bit more and to have that conversation or are we ready to pull the trigger to say, kind of the suggestion of what Amber said? So that's kind of what we're looking at. Yeah, Randy?
I like the idea of ask her for all of it and then when she says, well, these five I'm really not into, go through the programs, then we decide which programs. But if she's going to give all, take it now. And if she says no, then we'll decide what we want to prioritize for having a match.
Matt, Kyle, Pat, oh, I guess you're ready, you were ready to tell. Support that?
I'd support.
Yeah, okay. Kyle, I know you were.
Yeah, if I can be promised that we'll have another opportunity to reassess and nobody will make me feel bad about it, I'm totally on board. Really my, I, you know, if she's got an unlimited pool of discretionary funding, then sure, I've got no problem applying for all six and take what we can get, but if there would be any city match required, that's something I would definitely want a further conversation about, but yeah, if she can make all of them happen, great.
Just the last thing I'd say, you know, she doesn't have an unlimited pool, but that's why like we could sit here and deprioritize the things that she has prioritized and then ask for things that she's like, actually, this is not something that I'm prioritizing right now, you should have asked me for this thing because that's my priority this year or whatever the case may be, so I would suggest, you know, it's not just our priorities in this case, it's also what are hers and so see where it aligns. But if we start culling the field too early, then we will have that opportunity.
Okay. Matt, how do you feel about that? You're good with that? Okay. Michael, you're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that, thank you.
Anybody else? So does that give you enough direction?
Absolutely. Yep, and, and I would agree that coming back to talk to you, if we need a second stage of working on this is very appropriate, absolutely.
Let me just clarify, do we need, do we want to come back in two weeks to talk more about it or are you guys okay with just moving it? Nope.
Come back as soon as we have more information.
Fair enough, got that.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Thanks everyone for the conversation. Okay, moving on. Jai, come on up for peace in our cities. Oh, Anna, sorry. I didn't mean to exclude you, my friend. Sorry. Welcome.
Thank you. While she's logging in, I'd just like to say, my name is Anna Kinder and I'm the Director of the Health Department and I haven't had the opportunity to meet with you, Counselor McIntosh and Counselor Larson, so I hope to have the opportunity to do that sometime in the near future, but thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager and Counselors for letting us come and talk with you today. There's a lot of things that have been happening throughout the community for the last year, almost year. There we go, okay. So if you'll recall, back on April 11th in 2024, there was an opportunity for people to have a call to action in regards to some recent events that occurred in the community. And basically I wanted you to know that I heard your call to action. And as a public health official, we spend a lot of time looking for trends, outbreaks, looking at the population health, what's going on in our community, things that we should be concerned about, kind of what, what's going on, is there any trends? So since that time, I've had the opportunity to spend some additional research hours looking at the different areas that kind of present themselves as concerns. As you recall, in COVID, we did come together as a community and work together to keep our businesses open and work to really continue to keep the city going and I believe we can go back to some of those experiences. So I grew up here, we've always taken care of each other and I think that we really need to stand forward and do some of that again. So since the call to action in August of 24, I did a community assessment with many different partners in the community to identify what their concerns were, what their resources they had available to work forward in this program. And then in November, we had approximately 70 people come together for a task force meeting and we've kind of identified the suicide, violence, bullying and mental health are kind of the more significant areas that wanted to be addressed. So you might ask why public health and mental health, which this isn't a typical area that we spend time in, but because we're concerned of what's going on in our community, we have to recognize that mental health is just as important as physical health. Suicide and violence are the leading causes of premature death. When we look at suicide, that's basically internal violence and when we look at bullying and other things like that, that's the external violence. So as a public health official, we spend a lot of time looking at prevention and education and trying to figure out those interventions, evidence based, knowing, identifying what might work. So from the task force, we've identified ourselves as the Trono Wellness Task Force and what we're looking at is the three areas that I mentioned. Recognizing that there's many efforts going on in the community, we have a lot of nonprofits and community efforts that are taking place, but it's hard to describe or illustrate that we're all kind of moving in that same direction. There's great things happening in the community, but we're not moving forward together. So this is something that we would like to kind of reduce the risk of duplication of efforts and really increase our efficiency so that we're really working. duplication of efforts and really increase our efficiency so that we're really working towards more of a benefit to the community. So why is it a public health issue? As I talked about before, it's our, it's the entire community, not just individuals, and it's impacting our community. We can look at the economic effects that it has. We know that healthcare expenses go up. There's lost productivity in the workforce and there's a lot of unrest. A lot of people are concerned. So anytime there's an issue that comes up in all varieties of flavors that exist, we find out that there's a lot of efforts being going, presented forward by the public. This happened to me. I really want to do X, Y, and Z. So really looking at all of the unrest and what the community is talking about. So in solutions, we have policy changes, prevention programs, early intervention and many other things. We're not replacing, but merely looking to coordinate. So when we look at suicide, as we know that we're, we have a very unfortunate statistic that follows us. Last year in 2024, there were 32 deaths by suicide as compared to 23 where there are 27, which puts us ranked top four in the world for the number of deaths by suicide per capita. And that's all ages impacted. I was with the coroner yesterday and it doesn't look like we're off to a great start this year either. We know that social isolation, I mean, we live in Wyoming, there's not a lot of population that exists here, but we have situations that really put people at a higher risk. And we know that mental health is one of the areas as well as substance use. So we look at crisis helplines, community programs, strategies that everyone can get behind, prevention efforts and really looking upstream. And I think if anybody's heard me talk in the last six months, they will hear that I talk about upstream issues a lot. And I think that's where we need to spend a lot of time. When we look at the upstream issues, we can look at the social determinants of health. And those are the other areas that affect your overall health, which includes education access and quality, healthcare access and quality, neighborhood and built environment, social and community context, as well as economic stability. When we look at violence and bullying, we see that it is a significant public health threat. We look at domestic violence, gun violence, school shootings, youth violence, bullying in both youth and adults. One in five students report being bullied. It's not just at the kids level. Adults contribute to that as well. We see a lot of cyber bullying, particularly right now when we're looking at social media and the political atmosphere, if you will. And many people have been affected by that. We have the keyboard warriors. So the impact is that increased risk of mental health issues, PTSD, economic burden, and unfortunately, suicide. In prevention for violence and bullying, there are school programs, but looking at those policy changes, and I think you've seen some of that with the school district, having some restraints on having cell phones during the class periods and awareness campaigns. We also could possibly talk about gun safety and storage. So when we look at mental health, we know that it's a national emergency, that 50% of mental health conditions start by the age of 14. And we know that in the Trona County, we have a lot of stigma, obviously in the state we do as well, but we also have a lack of access to services. We may have a number of counselors, but the access to them for what the client may need is very difficult. We have a lot of counselors that are going into independent practice. So that means that they typically have the eight to five Monday through Friday schedule, but they don't have what to do if this person is in crisis. Insurance plays a factor and availability is a significant contributor. So we have possible solutions of telehealth, increasing the mental health workforce and outreach. These are all programmatic issues, but we need to be more strategic. So everyone has a role. So upstream is looking at those community-wide strategies for wellness and safety. And they're all preventable, suicide, violence and mental health. We need the community engagement and policy change. Mental health is a very broad description, but it is public health because we're looking at the wellness of a whole person, not just isolating out specific conditions. So our call to action is to be able to move further and get assistance on a much larger scale. Unfortunately, it's not something that I can lift by myself. It's not something that you all can lift by yourself, but together possibly could. So our citizens are asking for help and we really don't have time to wait. So I'm setting up my partner in crime here for the next part of the presentation.
Thanks, Anna. Hi, everyone. I'm Jai. I know that everybody here, I think. But thank you so much for letting me come in a different capacity today. And it's lovely to see all of you. So we wanted to start with Anna's presentation, both mostly to set the context for this conversation on Peace in Our Cities. I think all of us are, are generally, if not specifically aware about all of the issues that Anna presented. And what, what we're trying to really accomplish through the task force is to help identify those strategic goals of our community and, and help various initiatives that are taking place in the, in the community, like Anna said, work together and to have some leadership from the city for those efforts to thrive. So with the context of all of these overlapping and complex issues, the recommendation and the question that we have for, for you all today is whether the city would consider joining a network called the Peace in Our Cities Network. So there's a URL there, peaceinourcities.org, if any of you want to look at the website as I speak here. But I'll go, I'll tell you a little bit about the Peace in Our Cities Network. And I, I should say that I'm here on behalf of the task force and in, in the work with Anna. However, my professional, the organization I work for in the daytime is one of the co-facilitating partners of this network. So that's why I can come and kind of present to you a little bit more about the network from that habit as well. So Peace in Our Cities is a unique network that is global of cities who work to reduce the most serious forms of violence and increase safety in their communities. The network is driven first by what its members need. It unites cities and organizations around the world and aims to preserve lives and help cities thrive. The network has over 50 members that includes 24 to 25 cities themselves and also civil society organizations, global networks and international institutions. The overarching goal of member organizations and cities is to reduce violence by 50% by 2030. That's the, the guiding vision. And the network really works in three primary ways. The first is to advance, advance balance and evidence-informed solutions at the municipal level to work with or accompany city leaders and community partners and global networks who are working on these issues related to violence. And third, to really amplify two institutions and policymakers, the solutions that cities need and the solutions that are working based on the evidence available. So how does Peace in Our Cities work? First, I want to say clearly that Peace in Our Cities is free to join. The work done by cities and organizations who are part of the network is voluntary and it's based on their own goals and initiative. The point of joining the network is really just to gain access to expertise and other cities who are facing similar challenges in their communities. So that basically your community, Casper in this case, isn't doing it alone. Peace in Our Cities, the network is there to offer the connections, the resources and the support. And again, it does those in three primary ways. So the first two really are, are the bulk of what the network can provide to its members, which is accompanying them. So working with supporting city members and also advancing those solutions. So it's action-oriented, it's evidence-based, and again, it's responding to what members need rather than enforcing, you know, pre-prescribed solutions to an entity that may or may not be useful given the circumstances that, that any individual or entity is facing. Some examples of the work that Peace in Our Cities has done and will continue to do include the City Exchange Program, which is where the network actually supports cities to exchange. So a group of people can, from one area can go to another, learn what's working in their community and vice versa. It also offers webinars, provides tailored expert support. There's a peace incentive fund, which we're, the network's in its second iteration of, which is providing small grants to its members to actually pursue some of the solutions that they've identified. The network can provide engagement with philanthropies or funding opportunities. And the network also does original research. So those images there, lessons from effective offices of violence prevention. That's an example of some of the research that has been done recently. And then the peace incentive fund, that's a report from the first round of, of that funding. That gets them there. So I just want to say again, one of the really important things, and I think one of the things that sets Peace in Our Cities apart from other city-based networks is that it recognizes that any solution really depends on those local needs, the capabilities that are available and the context. So there's no one-size-fits-all approach. Local communities know themselves best. And so in that case, some members are more aligned with our challenges than others. But solutions are available also and learning from others are, are available in ways that we might not immediately guess. This is the third kind of core tool, I guess, of the network, which is to, again, amplify. So it's, it's not only trying to influence policy by, by the research and the evidence that's created, but it's also to bring local voices upward rather than what happens most of the time, which is bringing global voices downward and trying to impose. So one of the, one of the approaches of the network is to really elevate local voices and to share across networks and platforms what cities are doing. That's actually quite impressive and, and quite effective when it comes to reducing violence. So I wanted, so again, I mentioned there are 24, 25 cities that are, on the wrong slide here, sorry. Guiding Principles is one of the key reports from the network. It's just, again, another example of some of the work that is done. But I wanted to, to share this because it's, it's a key piece of paper essentially, but mostly ideas that help guide what has, what the evidence has shown to be effective when a community wants to reduce violence. So those principles include balancing between law enforcement and social prevention, focusing on high-risk people, places and behavior, fostering interrelated approaches to violence prevention, investing in the legitimacy of all efforts. So really, complex issues require complex solutions and so we shouldn't oversimplify. Design evidence-based and data-driven policies and uphold justice-centric approaches and listen to vulnerable individuals. So those are principles because there's no policy set that's going to work in, in every system or every place. But generally, these principles should apply everywhere.
So just to add to that, when we look at the high-risk people, places and behavior and some of those populations that we have concern about, so when Jai first brought this to my attention and talked with me about it, right? It talks a lot about the violence, but it's really about the safety and wellness of the whole community. So it's a much bigger picture, but violence, you know, obviously is a common word that is utilized. But as I said earlier, internal versus external. So it's all of those high-risk people, places and behavior that we're seeing. It's not just law enforcement or anything like that. It is a whole, well-rounded approach.
And connected back to those social determinants of health. So here I just wanted to show a few examples of member cities just because if you go to the website and you look, it might be confusing to understand who has relevant experience or efforts that, that really would benefit us by joining. So the first one here is actually Edmonton, Canada. And Edmonton has committed itself to be the safest city in Canada by 2030. And it actually has a really impressive, comprehensive strategy for safety and well-being. They collaborate with community partners. They focus on creating inclusive spaces. They address mental health and provide robust support to vulnerable populations. And, and I think, you know, for me personally, having learned a little bit about what they do, so much of the issues, so many of the issues that they face really are very common to what we're seeing here in Casper, obviously at a different scale, but it's just an example of a connection that could be made by becoming part of the network that otherwise we, we might have more challenges, kind of connecting and learning from them.
But we can benefit from the lessons learned of things that they've gone through and experience where we don't have to just create or reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, exactly. So here's another example. So Empire Fighting Chance is an organizational member that is based in Bristol in the United Kingdom. They're really impressive and, and working on a lot of different things, but they've actually initiated from this boxing gym. They've, they've actually successfully launched the first office of violence prevention in the United Kingdom. And so they've found that their boxing therapy results are better than those experienced by the National Health Institute. And they really focus on mental health and youth. And so again, it just seems like there could be some really valuable insights that we could learn from them. And, and these are not unlikes and resources that we actually have in our community. It just might not be that we're tapping into them and working with them in ways that, that we could be doing more effectively into the shared goals. And then the last one I'll share here is Palmira, Colombia. So in Palmira, they're, they have historically have really high homicide rates. So again, not necessarily that we're facing the exact same issue, but one of the programs that they developed, which is called Pazos, which is peace in Spanish, is focused on community engagement, socioeconomic support and educational opportunities for residents between the ages of 15 and 29. So they have conflict resolution programs, vocational training, employment opportunities and entrepreneurial, entrepreneurship support. It's a public-private collaboration with community actors, law enforcement and private sector partners working together to address the structural causes of crime. So again, we might, thankfully, we don't have the homicide levels that are, that they're experiencing in Palmira. But these programs led to significant, almost 30% reduction in their, in their rate of violence over three years of implementing them. And I just think that obviously it's worked. And so there might be a lot that we could learn from a model like that and how they engage with their youth, especially vulnerable youth, and how they make them feel part of the community. So in summary, we know that there is a lot of work being done on these issues. We have people here in the audience who are spearheading and supporting many of those issues. And so joining Peace in Our Cities is really just one additional way that the city and our community organizations can demonstrate their commitment to improving safety and wellness in Casper. We can use the network's guidance to understand how to support these ongoing initiatives and identify where there are other opportunities for engagement. This would be especially meaningful to the task force as we move forward. It can also help the city understand more comprehensively the policies and approaches that have proven elsewhere to reduce violence and strengthen local resilience. If you're interested in joining, the city manager and mayor can be in touch with the Peace in Our Cities Secretariat. It's really just signing a pledge and learning more about how to engage. Again, there's no fee. There's no accountability mechanism. It's really just based on the initiative, you know, the desires of the local community to make change. From the task force perspective, we do hope that you will consider this as a next step. It really will help us with our efforts to work with the community, the city and our schools to establish this community-wide safety and wellness strategy. And that's everything.
Thank you. So questions for Anna or Jai?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. First off, thanks for this, for all the work. So trying to figure out how to collaborate, I'll just, the only one I'm really aware of is Blue Heart. And so do you see the Health Trust helping coordinate all of this with us being part of that? Or how, how do you vision all of this trying to come together for better success?
Thank you, Counselor, for that question, Mr. Mayor. I think we have a representative from the Collective Health Trust in the audience, but right now they're already working very heavily with the Youth Mental Health Collective and the Trona Council for Safety and Justice. Those are very significant programs that are underway currently. They're very much aligned towards where we're trying to go. But really kind of bringing all of us together so that we're going together. Like I can think of a number of things that we're duplicating efforts when there really doesn't need to be that. Everybody's doing fantastic work, critical, essential work. And it's not meaning that we'll just take any of that away, but just to have that common goal of where we're going. And like those goals and objectives, I think would be helpful. But I, I definitely see that they would be a tremendous partner because they've already done so much of the work.
Yeah. And I would just say, we obviously can't speak for the trust, but this, this work on the task force is. But this, this work on the task force is really to learn and to really understand strategically what is needed, not to replace any ongoing hurt. And so we are in touch with, with representatives from all the youth violence group and also the Council for Safety and Justice. So we're trying to learn what's going on, understand what gaps are in place so that we can help bring everybody together. But it's, yeah, I, we certainly see the trust as a partner and it also don't want to if that's fair.
And I think the task force was always just geared towards kind of identifying strategies and kind of a direction of where we're going. And then it would disband to the level of people doing the work at the ground level with the entire community.
Others.
Do you see like, I just watched Lance Nyberg being a collaborator, all, all of those different groups? But I guess I, I still don't have the vision. How do we pull all of that together?
Yes, actually, the Natrona County Suicide Prevention Task Force, and I probably just totally slaughtered that. I did, yeah. Anyway, they, that is now the chairperson and that is the coroner. And we have met and talked, and we're very much on the same page. We also have the efforts that are being done by the governor with Prosper. So we'll be having two Prosper trainings that are coming forward. So it's really like knowing that we have, for example, QPR, mental health first aid, Prosper, all of the different strategies, but we know that one size doesn't fit all. But I think if we can kind of know what all is available and then move forward, we also have a heavy emphasis of agriculture and the comet program that they utilize, like knowing what the resources are available and having that very prevalent and then the common goal of where we're going. Because we want Casper to be a very safe and healthy city, not just physically, but mentally as well. Having the opportunities, knowing what other entities have available. There could be opportunities that we could learn, like, oh, wow, if we just talked about it in this framework, then we kind of all fall into the same path and move forward. Hopefully that answers it.
And I would just say, I mean, in my mind, I, I go back to what I've learned from Edmonton. And, and their strategy is so cool because it's really, there's, there's clearly a community-wide strategy that's been set by the city and by its, its main primary community organization or community partner. But it's, it's not, they're not telling what each individual agency needs to be doing. They're just trying to be aware of what agency, what each individual agency is doing so that, that there's also an opportunity to see if there are gaps or to see where there are things that are really working that require additional support. And so if you look at their annual report, it's really cool because it's, it's got kind of an overview, but it also lists each individual, like, organization or program that's connected to this strategy. And for me, thinking, you know, as a resident, how great would that be if you could go to the city of Casper's website and say, oh, we've got this community safety and wellness strategy, and here are all the ways that all the community partners and the trust and the hospital and public health are all contributing underneath it, not being directed by it, but are just active participants. And in some ways, I mean, residents with the trust are really have been leaders in terms of marching forward and trying to make progress. So I think in terms of the vision, really, that's kind of what we've set ourselves out to try to do is, is help figure out how do we map this all out? And, and Peace in Our Cities has experience helping other municipalities do that work. And so they would be a really great partner to us as we navigate all of those complexities and different factors.
Paul, you had your hand up.
I, I did. Thank you, ladies, for the presentation. Sorry, I had to clear my throat there. Kind of along Pat's comments about trying to get an understanding of how to pull it all together. It's no cost, so, you know, I don't think we should be fearful of committing ourselves in that regard. But I do wonder, would it require obligating our city staff to participate in webinars or, you know, meetings and stuff beyond what they already are? You know, I know our city attorney goes to the Safety and Justice meetings. I know we have officers in Suicide Task Force and Prevention Coalition meetings and stuff. So I think we already have a presence in most of those, and they could certainly, those groups or the one at the Health Department could bring to us recommendations that are sort of derived from the work with Peace in Our Cities. But what other commitment do you see from the city other than, you know, obviously, there's not a financial commitment? Is there anything else that we should be aware of and considering? Or is it pretty hands-off? It's just kind of a more like a proclamation and just, that's all it takes? And then we just unlock access to some of these other resources we don't have otherwise?
So I'm going to answer it from my perspective, and then I know you have one. But what I would like you to consider is that we don't want any more meetings, right? We already are taxed out with a number of meetings. And so really facilitating and using those to our best interests. I don't want to have another meeting. You can't make a decision with 70 people in the room. So like, having that structure of how we can get the information out to the different groups was a really good one. So making sure that we're not having any more meetings. But recently, I was walking out of a meeting with someone that just said, wow, just another meeting where we just talk again. And I think that's my biggest frustration because I alone, or the Health Department alone, can't move forward. The task force can't move forward because it is such a big undertaking. So having someone who has experience and knowledge to do this. I can tell you, I have looked at best practices, evidence-based, like, I have so many articles that I've read. But to know how and what they learn from those, I don't have that in whatever it is I'm reading. And so I think using these guys would actually help streamline that and save us some time and energy.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think that that's really the point, is this is a network that's meant to serve. It's not asking you to specifically teach. So you don't, I mean, I think it's, the city will get more out of it if people attend the webinars to learn. But nobody's going to get kicked out of the network if they don't want to. I mean, I think it's really dependent on what the goals are and what, you know, what really the city is hoping for in terms of membership. And I, I should also say that the city would join, also, public health would join. There would be no reason why we couldn't include other community organizations to join in partnership. So I think, I imagine that when it comes to setting a strategy or understanding what's happening, there, there will have to be some engagement with different entities around our community. But I, I think to Anna's point, it will be with a very specific purpose, to learn what's going on so that the experts that I work with can come in and, and say, you know, here's, here's what you might consider. And nothing will be imposed. And certainly, you could sign a proclamation, but we will definitely be engaging with them.
Other question?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm in Edmonton, Alberta, Canada, as we speak. So, but not, not for Peace in Our Cities, but what a coincidence. But anyway, I did want to get to, I, I think this was Counselor Sweeney's question, or maybe what he was seeking was, so Anna, as I heard you speaking about the, the task force initially there, you talked about, if I understood you correctly, that, that, that the task force would be kind of that coordinating body, if you will, to kind of keep a pulse and, and kind of some awareness about what, what's happening throughout the community and, and among the different organizations and nonprofits, et cetera. And, and this just seems very timely to me in terms of, you know, something you all said about in terms of that balance between law enforcement and prevention. You know, given, you know, what we talked about, the proposals we looked at were, that were all kind of law enforcement-oriented. You know, some, some effort along the, the lines of, of prevention might be really helpful. But is that, did I understand you correctly, Anna? Is that what's, the way you kind of all envisioned the task force and as being that coordinator? You talked about the, setting some goals and so forth. And then my, the second part of that question is, what, or can you let us, can you tell us who currently from Casper is involved in the task force? And do we have people from the city that attend that regularly?
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. I would just like to clarify that the task force was out of a response at the county level to look at where we were going, what information we needed to have. So there was a heavy emphasis to include municipalities in that, so including Evansville, Varna, and Mills, et cetera. So really including everybody so that we're all on the same page. All of the quote-unquote people that the task force talked with are some of the same exact people. Most all are the same people that are on the other eight groups that we're working with. So it wouldn't be like, it's really like gearing more towards the governmental, that strategic level kind of planning kind of things. And so I think that's an important thing to think of, how it was started and where it was meant to go and what we're doing. Right now, we've kind of taken a step back so that we could gain some additional information. There was a lot of things that were happening all at the same time. And it was kind of a, you know, 70 people cannot make a decision of where we need to go. And so we stepped back and really like talked very intently with the police chief, with the coroner, with different groups, and have additional ones, the college, all of those kinds of areas. There was trying to like learn as much as possible because everybody's having some impact to their school, their business, or anything like that. The business community is very interested in knowing how to deal with some of these situations. And so we've kind of taken it back a little bit, Jai and myself, to do like some really like fact-finding information. And so this just is kind of a, a help to help us move forward and faster and then utilize all of the other groups that already exist to say, hey, you know, this is a group that we're working with, this is the information that they provided. Would you be willing to help us work forward? We're part of those groups and we spend a lot of time with them, so.
And, and do we have a representative from the city or the city council attending those meetings? Or those, the task force meetings specifically?
At, yes, we do. I'm looking at Counselor Haskins, and she's saying, yes. So we do have representatives at the youth meeting. And then we do have the ability, and no, Counselor Sweeney has attended the larger NCSJ meeting. So yes, there is familiarity by a host of people, I think, at the municipalities. I know the Evansville mayor is very attentive to what's going on. And then also Mills is very active, especially with some additional work that they're doing. So really trying to keep them involved.
So did I misunderstand you about the, the task force? Is that, did you talk about, early on, about coordination and kind of not avoiding duplication and so forth? Does that happen to the task force?
So the task force originally came out of the information that we gained from the needs assessment that was done in August, and we identified those top five factors that were of concern. We also identified community members that had resources that could contribute to working towards that. The social justice group has been in existence for three-plus years, I want to say. And so it's very active in behavioral health, crisis response, homeless, all of those kinds of areas. So what the task force was kind of put together is to try to bring the municipalities together at more of that, that strategic level to move forward, not replacing the work that they're doing, but really kind of like aligning, because we have found duplicates of what's going on. Or if there's an incidence that occurs, if you watch Facebook, you'll see that there is a group that sprouts to deal with that specific issue. As community members, ourselves, and as part of trying to figure out navigating the task force, we want to help alleviate some of that duplication of effort and be very efficient and very intentive of where we want to go. And I think Peace in Our Cities is how we've identified, having that outside resource come in and give us strategies that we don't even know of at this point.
Okay. And then, if I just do a, just to follow up quickly, Jai, the, the Lessons Learned paper that you, document that you referred to, is that available through the Peace in Our Cities website? Is there a charge, you know?
Oh, yeah, everything's accessible on the website.
And it, there, there's a charge, a fee for that, or purchase it? Or is it, or is it just available on the website?
Yeah, no, it's, there's no, it's, it's free. You can download, access it.
Okay. Thank you.
Pat, and then I'll, we'll go and get Amber. Do you want me to get Amber first?
Um, so, thank you. I, I, I feel like we're maybe getting too far in the weeds about the mechanics of this. I think that what this, that's probably all TBD, depending on what the ultimate sort of like higher-level strategy is. And so I, I feel like trying to answer those questions now is a little bit premature. I think, you know, the, the groundwork has been laid to sort of like understand the community, understand where we're at, understand the challenges, the resources, all of those things. And that, I think, is the, the work of the last several years. But I think the ask here is like, can the city take a stronger role? And like, so what, what do we do with all that information? And where do we, where do we head? You know, what are the outcomes we're looking for? What does it mean to us to say like, you know, do we set a goal like, like Edmonton to say, we want to be the safest city in Wyoming? Or is it, we want to reduce X, Y, and Z by this much? And then all of these partners and all the people that do this work every day come to the table and say, well, in order to do that, we're going to do this, this, and this. So to me, I think that now is, it is time now, right? Because we've, we've, all of these community partners have, have done this body of work, spent a lot of time and effort trying to, trying to get a lay of the land and understand, you know, where we're at, what is leading to the outcomes we're seeing now. And I think it's time that we, in, in our role, say, okay, well, where do we want to be then? And then we've got ample community partners and resources coming to the table wanting to help with this problem, that they can start to deploy their resources to those ends that we have collectively come up with together. So to me, I think that's the ask. And I think if we don't do something like this, we're going to sort of continue to be reactive, to keep spinning our wheels a little bit. A new thing happens, and now we divert our attention and try to deal with that thing versus setting something a little higher level that we can all be in agreement with where we're trying to head with it. So to me, you know, if not this resource, what? But I think that, you know, the need for us to take a lead there still exists. And so this sounds like a good effort to try to do that, being that it's free, being that it's familiar to, to somebody who's quite familiar with the issues that, that we've, you know, experienced in these seats and can help us sort of navigate that. And being that it's the recommendation coming from the folks who have kind of gathered that information for us, I think, you know, it's a, it's a good next step for us to take something concrete that we can do to start to help the community move forward and build towards whatever it is that we set our sights on.
So I totally agree. But what I'm concerned about is, and yes, we need to move forward, do something. I think they've laid out a great piece. But I don't know if we should be, we should sign up for Peace, Peace in Our, in Our Cities. But should we be the coordinator? Do we have staff that will dedicate what's necessary? Because, I mean, the amount of hours, just these two individuals, let alone everybody across everything. So I hate to do this, but Pat, yeah. So I, I'm just wondering if the Health Trust has been to a lot of their meetings. They're excellent at what they do across Ward. But do they have the resources? Could they hire another person? You know, to, to make sure this, this work doesn't fall apart? Or do we, are we of the body, make it happen? I would like to think that, but.
Yeah. No, I, I was just going to say that I, I think, I just want to kind of go back to what Amber was saying. I think we need to take it as a I think we need to take it as a approach, are we willing to sign on to say, is this the next step? And then take the next step to say, okay, look, we're willing to look at this program. And I don't know if we're there yet to be like, hey, let's hire someone to run this program, program. I think we're kind of in the infancy stage for kind of even understanding the whole process and understanding all of it within peace of our cities.
It's not even a program.
Or not even a program, but a whole movement.
The program doesn't exist. That would have to be established, right? So it's not, it's not a program, it's a strategy, which we said all the time in work session. And then the programs develop from there, whether we're running them, whether the trust is running them, or whether the Health Department's running them, or whether, you know, whatever the case may be, but.
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's, it's just a, to me, there's not, there's not a program. It's, it's just a.
Nothing to run per se.
Right, yeah, there's nothing to coordinate or run at this point because we haven't established a strategy with programs that flow from that strategy in order to achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve.
Okay, Carter. Go ahead, Carter.
I didn't mean to jump in there. The, the challenge that we have is, as, as we've mentioned already, there are a number of disparate functions taking place right now. And it, it seems very apparent to me that if the city of Casper doesn't take this step to be the one entity, hopefully the first entity that signs on as a member of this network, then we, we may never be able to access what it is that this network has available for us. And it, it, it seems like the city of Casper is a, is a reasonable candidate to make that step, given the, the types of members that are already in the network. And I'm not getting the impression that any of the other government agencies are willing to take that step, yet. I, I think they will, but I think it's going to take somebody to, or some agency to take that first step, get out there in the network and start to try to find the benefits that we can harvest. Otherwise, I don't think it will happen.
I echo what Carter just said. I think that this step needs to be taken because we need, we've been years and years contemplating and talking about this situation. My wife and I have been involved in it for about 15 years with the mental health issues and stuff going on with suicide prevention. And I think if we don't take this step, we can't take all of those goals that we've looked at over the last 15, 20 years and turn them into action. But I, we've come to the point where we've got a lot of nonprofits, a lot of boards, a lot of organizations that have little pieces here and there. And I think if we join this coalition and, and get their knowledge and what they've been through, then we'll be better equipped for us to move forward and do the actions that we need to take, which will come down the road hopefully to where we'll be able to. But I think as city leaders, we need to absolutely make, make a step in that direction. Otherwise, we're going to just flounder for another 20 years.
Brandy. Why did you know I was trying to look at you? Because you were going like this, but I couldn't.
Obviously, I'm biased because I'm a part of multiple of the committees that are involved in this, but we had a call to action, they did the action. This is our response, they're coming to us. 70 agencies were at the wellness, that's a lot of people. So this is what they want us to do, we told them to bring us something, here it is. So I feel like it's our responsibility. If they're saying, we want you to just put your name behind this, then that's what we need to do. Otherwise, they've wasted all of their time doing what we told them to do or asked them. But it was kind of bossy.
That was bossy.
It was really bossy.
I liked it.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I just wanted to speak to the concerns about staff time. I can tell you myself, members of our fire department and police department are heavily involved in, in various meetings and efforts, both through the trust and otherwise, to, to address these issues already. And, and it really slots in with what we do every day. I mean, our, our folks in the PD and the fire department, I mean, they, they, they deal with these issues day in and day out. And I think our, our chiefs have come in and talked to you all about some of the, the numbers in terms of, of response to suicidal subjects and suicides, et cetera. In, in my office, you know, we're spearheading the diversion program through municipal court, working very closely with the Supreme Court. And this really kind of spills over into our efforts with the homeless coalition, right? It's, it's a little slightly different focus, but, but a lot of the same issues, a lot of the same, same players. So I think your staff is already very heavily invested in a lot of this. And from what I've heard and my understanding of this program, I don't believe for us it's going to add a lot of additional work. And I think certainly it would, you know, show a commitment on the part of the city if, if you choose to participate, that, hey, that the city as a whole is, is behind this effort and, and, and willing to spearhead it. So, so that's certainly up to your discretion and your decision. But, but I think from a staff, and I hate to speak for, for everybody, but we're, we're already doing a lot of this work on, on a daily and a monthly basis.
So I brought, we did talk about this in our council of governments at a breakfast. The Vice Mayor and I were there and it was brought up because I know you guys have worked with some of the municipalities, Evansville and Mills and so forth. So we did bring that up and have that conversation. And, and I certainly was very supportive of the idea that we need to forward with something. I think we've kind of tried to figure out what is working, so we're kind of patching here, we're kind of doing this and talking about it. So I think from my standpoint, putting this as saying, this is our commitment to stand behind what the community is doing, kind of like what Brandy was saying. And there's no commitment in any way, shape, or form as far as financial or staff or programs, it's really kind of an opportunity for us to say that we are committed to having a safe, safe community. The mayors and the commissioners seem to be aligned. I think there was some hesitation by some people because I think of some misinformation about peace in our cities, which I, which I want to definitely address because I think that that needs to be addressed. But the, the outlandish idea that it's connected somehow to George Soros is absolutely false, that absolutely has been perpetuated with false information. You do a little bit of research on your own and there is no, no connection to that. And so I think this is, from my research and looking into it, it's a great probe, I won't call it a program. It's a great opportunity and resource for us as a community to be a part of that. And I'm 100% behind it. And I think we either sit on our hands and keep talking, or we do something as a city to do that, so. Yes?
Total agreement. So Health Department, would you, if you had additional resources, be able to continue as far as the coordination? I'm, I'm worried about, you know, the coordination and stuff moving forward. But I, I know that takes additional resources.
Currently, thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. Currently, it is myself that is working on it due to the fact that we didn't typically have a funding stream in that area. We were just recently awarded a grant to hire two community health workers that will hopefully help with some of that. The funding is only for one year. So my hope, plan, illusion or not, is that we utilize those community health workers to really identify what we need, what's going on in the community at a whole different level than we've had before, and then come and identify what additional resources we perhaps would need. At this time, there is not an ask or anything along those lines. I think we don't know a lot right now. I just know that it is something that I'm very passionate about because I've had a lot of people who have, have suffered from all of these areas. And I know that the board is very strongly behind me as well. So trying to navigate and figure out what that looks like. The Health Department is very much under like some change. We're not the same ones that we were back in 2019. Things have changed a great deal. And so this is a significant trend that is going on in our community that I think needs to be addressed, but the knowing the what at this time is kind of a mystery.
So the last thing that I'll say, and then we'll kind of move forward because we're a little over time already, but what I said to the council of governments, and, and I said, this is not a red question, this is not a blue question, this is a humanity question of how we are working with our, the youth in our, in our community, the violence, suicide rates are out of control in the state of Wyoming, if we keep talking about it, we don't do anything about it. So my point is, is that I, I let them, we've got to come together as municipalities as a community in Neptuna County for us to address it. We cannot do it by ourselves as a city. We can take the first step as leaders to say, we're going to back this and work together. And so we've tried, we're trying everything. We need to try, we need to look at other avenues to keep going. We have a crisis, and that's not even being, I'm not being dramatic, we have a crisis in this community. We just had a shooting of another young man just a few weeks ago. We have a crisis and we've needed, we need to address that and start talking about it honestly and transparently as a community. So I'm in favor of, of that. And so I just want to kind of open that up to the council. I'm very passionate too.
We need, like, does this take a resolution? Does this take, what form?
You know, Jai, what they want.
Like, we want to join Peace in Our Cities, signed mayor. I mean, there's really not, it's meant to serve Casper's needs, it's not to serve the network's needs. So, I mean, we'd love to have, you know, a, a statement and a reason why Casper's joining, but there's no legal accountability mechanism. I, I don't know from the city side, of course.
Mr. Mayor, Jai, you had mentioned signing a pledge or what it did. So it does seem to me that it's at least a minute action or, or some kind of formal action on, on behalf of the council to, to that probably is wise. So I think that depending on how, if council wants to move forward with this, you know, we could get that information and then, and, you know, tee it up. I, I would think, I think the city manager, if it's a minute action or resolution.
Next week. So final call, is anybody really uncomfortable or you guys feel like you're comfortable with us moving forward with something like this? We would do a minute action, but then we would also probably have a statement out why we're, we're moving forward with this as well as the council's questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Michael.
Would, I, I guess just have a lingering question is, would a, this applied for Carter or Eric, would a resolution be appropriate just to just kind of make a formal statement that, of support? You know, realizing that, you know, peace in our cities doesn't need that, but, but it might, you know, send a message, you know, in our community.
Mr. Mayor, councillor, we can prepare a resolution, absolutely. And we'll get help from these guys to do it, I bet.
And, and I don't want to speak for the whole council, I'm, that's just, I'm just wondering.
We can do that.
The school district's been involved, right?
Yeah.
I think that's another great conversation that the school district's involved with it. So it's just another agency or other organization at that level is participating in this. And so I think Casper jumping on is going to be a big one. So it sounds like everybody's okay with that, moving forward. So let me, let, let us know what Carter and I need to do. You know, we can move forward with a resolution of some sort, absolutely. And then we'll communicate that, talk about it as a council team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, automated phone payments.
Mr. Mayor, we have the opportunity to consider a service enhancement in our customer service ranks. And so, and, and obviously for the benefit of the public, if I could invite Brandy and Jill up to walk us through that, this will, I'm sure will be a very helpful conversation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, councillors. So we would like to propose to you all a change in how we accept incoming phone payments. So currently, the customer service staff, they get a lot of calls that are coming in. These are people who want to pay their bill over the phone. There's risk to that. So what we're proposing is that we change that from being a customer service person managing that to being an automated phone system. So really, the architect of this whole process is Brandy Coyle, she is our accounts receivable supervisor. And Mr. Mayor, if I could turn some time over to her to not only discuss the program, but to also talk about the communication to our citizens to get them to be aware of our group.
Brandy, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. I appreciate your time to listen to me on this proposal today. My team is consistently looking for ways to be more efficient with risk and better serve our citizens. And this is one of the ways that I think we can get those items. We currently, based off of our average phone calls that we take daily, we touch over 12,000 payments every year coming in to us over the phone. And that's 12 times annually, or 12,000 times annually that we have a risk involved. We're taking those calls in, we're asking them to tell us their card number over the phone, which that risk of being eavesdropped on their end of things. Although I have full faith with my team, it gives them the opportunity to take that information and do something, we should. And so this proposal would reduce or eliminate that potential risk because the customer will input their card information directly into an automated phone system in order to make their payment. As you've probably read in the memo, there is a fee involved with that automated phone system. But I want to assure you that we still offer free options for the customers, which includes our easy pay system, which is where we do an automatic payment on the 20th day after their bill cuts directly from their bank account. There's no charge involvement of that for the citizens. We also will still continue to take checks in person as well as cash, and they can send their payments in via check in the mail or drop them off at the drop box, just inside the lobby. One of our efforts that we have been tasked with is to reduce our delinquent shut-off list for meter services to a more manageable listing so that they can potentially get 100% shut-off, which on council last year, remember those conversations. And we have made a huge effort into making collection calls to try to do that. Currently, we, in the first half of FY '25, we were able to collect payments from 36% of the customers that we were able to reach. However, only, we only actually connected with 7% of the people we attempted to reach and we are only working 40% of the collection list we before shut off. Eliminating these payment, internal payments, I think we can leverage that to reach 100% of the delinquent list the week before shut off. And that should increase our customer contacts by over, by 150%, which will lead to a significant rise in our collection of funds for utilities. It streamlines our operations, strengthens our customer relationships because we're going to be able to spend more time with the customers that have concerns about their billing or need to do a move in or have some issues that they need to resolve involving their, their billing. It also will, well, our last one is positively impact the customers. I think that it will. So, so again, it's just going to ensure that our, we have a more secure payment process and also benefits the city's financial stability. In the memo, I believe there was an attached rollout period. I'm suggesting that we take about three months to fully roll out this process. It'll involve a, a number of different communication with the citizens through their billing, some press release, social media, as well as my staff, as they take in those calls, they're going to be communicating with the customers, interacting. some press release, social media, as well as my staff as they take in those calls, they're going to be communicating with the customers, interacting with them to help guide them to our automated system, give them information on how that works. We also, I just thought of this today, actually Jill brought it up, the automated phones tree that we have. We will implement an option where they can press one to make a payment and get directly to them so that they can bypass having to speak with a customer service representative. And so I really think that the, like the three or four month phasing will help ease that customer through that process. And again, I truly believe that this is going to help reduce risk and improve efficiency of my team as well as serve the customers better going forward.
Questions for Brandy?
On the customer service side of it, if somebody's having trouble with the automated system and they get themselves to customer service, does that come now to you? Or is there an embedded customer service within whatever third-party system we're using for the automated payment system?
So currently, if they're having trouble with it, they would need to call our staff directly so that we can help troubleshoot them.
So there's not a, the service that we're using does not have customer service within their system?
Does not.
That's something I can look into. I mean, as long as they can get to customer service somehow. It would be annoying to me if I then had to hang up and find a different number to call you at. So if it's like, if that can be built into the system where it's like, press. And they like, I can't understand you, I can't understand you, like press zero and get to a person. Other than to your office or if this platform has folks that handle it. And they're screaming, "Represent us!" Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
My person.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So first off, the current system on the call-in, how long's that been in existence? Five years or?
I've been in my position for four and that call tree, I believe, was in place for four to five years before that.
So during, Mr. Mayor, a follow-up. So during that time period, how many fraudulent calls or attacks against that system have you recorded?
Mayor, councillor, may I just get clarification? Are you asking about the automated phone system or are you asking the payments that my staff is taking in?
The payments your staff's taking in via the phone.
So I don't have that number. I do know that it's five to 10 disputed transactions that we have on probably an annual basis. The trend is that fraud continues to go up with credit card transactions. And the more we can do to reduce that risk and that kind of thing, I think is going to be a good direction for the city. A lot of time, if it's over the phone, I can't, I have no, I have no way to prove that we're speaking to the individual that they say that they are. And so by just bypassing us fully, that eliminates that risk.
And another question. So these numbers here that were given us, the E-check, I'm not too worried about, but credit card payment, $393,224, who pays that currently today?
Great question, Mayor and councillor. That number is currently being paid by the citizens currently. What you're seeing there is that we, I looked into whether or not the city could absorb a 50 cent fee that's incurred by using the automated phone system. We cannot, based off of the configurations with our payment processor. But we can if we were to absorb all of the fee in relation to one or the other. I would not recommend the credit card side because we just went, three years ago, right after I started in this position. We went to the service fee model where we pass that fee onto the customer and the customer pays it. And that's a big number. And so I would recommend that we not go that direction if you're wanting to find a solution where the customer's not paying another 50 cents. The E-check would be in this memo recommendation. I just provided both numbers so you can see the volume that you would be looking at if you.
Mr. Mayor, do you, do you know what our current fee schedule is back to the consumer as far as credit card fees? Is it 3%, 2.5%? What's been negotiated?
Mayor, councillor, it's 3.25 with a minimum of $2. If you're looking at the credit card side of things. If you're looking at the E-check side of things, it's $1.95 flat fee across the board for all transactions, no matter how much they are. Same thing with the 50 cent fee. It's a flat fee regardless of the mechanism they use to make the payment.
So I'm an 86-year-old widower, living on my own, not getting a lot of support from my family. You came on now. And, and I've got a water bill. Can I still call customer service and have you walk me through? Or I'm not able to get down here to the drop box or any other way? What do I do?
We should be able to conference call into the automated phone system for them and get them to the point of putting in their card number to be able to make that payment. Or their, each, their bank account number if that's the option they choose. So that we can help them through that process.
Okay. Any more questions for Brandy?
Thank you. Thanks, Brandy. I mean, I, I'm fine with this for a number of reasons. One, I believe last year we wrote off somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 in uncollected debts and on pay bills. I think the year before that it was like twice that. And so, you know, it is an expense on the city's part, 100 to $200,000 past couple of years. There is a pressure from people that the government operate more like a business. And certainly, any large business, if you've got to pay over the phone, we all have that experience of doing that and it's because it's cheaper. And so I think from that point of view, it's the city showing that it's being more efficient. You reiterated that if you don't want to go through the phone tree, you don't want to pay that extra 50 cents to do the card over the phone. You can come in person, pay your bill. You can mail in a check or drop a cash in the drop box. You can do automated bank withdrawals. So there's plenty of other options for folks to do that. And so, you know, I would love to see us collect as much of those unpaid fees as much as possible. Last time we discussed this a year or two ago. I remember that being a huge point of criticism, well, the city just needs to spend more resources to collect these debts. Well, this is a solution to free up capacity for your staff to make more of those outbound calls. And so, you know, nobody loves playing around with phone trees. But if we can make sure it's as, you know, tight as possible, if somebody is struggling, they do have access to a person. And they're not just stuck in the phone, you know, endless phone tree loop, which I certainly want, wouldn't want that to be people's experience. But I think it's a nice compromise to, you know, reduce some of those expenses that we write off every year.
Yeah.
I agree completely. And the only thing I would add is I really like the idea of being able to get to 100% of the list to at least call, attempt to call them before we shut off the water, just because that feels like better customer service to me as well. Like, we did try to contact you to give you a heads up that this was coming your way rather than just being a nasty surprise. So I like that added benefit as well, not just from the collection standpoint, but just from the user experience standpoint.
All right, any direction on this card?
If council's a thumbs up, that would be helpful to know.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Brandy. Thank you, Jill. Appreciate your time. Okay, on to agenda review. Carter, do you have anything you'd like to go?
Mr. Mayor, given that we are significantly over time at this point, I can certainly just point out real quickly, the future agenda items page on the back of your grid document is a, is a sort of nudge in terms of things that you may not see there or that haven't been docketed that perhaps we may have missed for items that you think need to come forward. And that's, that's all I have.
All right, questions around the table? Let's start with Amber. Are you okay? Start or do you want me to come back?
Yes, just one second. I just want to.
I can start with Kyle. Kyle, you ready?
Yes. I had a Metro Animal Shelter Task Force meeting last Wednesday. We have two new staff starting on the 10th. That'll put us up to four full-time kennel staff, two more getting background checks. And if those come through, we'll be fully staffed for the first time that the shelter manager can remember. I think probably the first time since myself and my colleagues have been on council. So looking forward to the prospect of having a fully staffed shelter so that we can have, you know, full operating hours and all those things that our community expects from us. They're working with Shared and Cat Rescue to carry our, carry out our TNR program. Once we get close to that point of being fully staffed, that's really been the, the sticking point so far is just not having enough staff to do it. But once we get closer to getting fully staffed and/or fully staffed, we'll start seeing some of those TNR, TNR events taking place. They're going to be essentially our fiscal agent for grant funding. March 4th, we should expect a contract for a consultant to begin, to begin working on design and architectural renderings for the new shelter. And once those designs are around 30%, we'll be bringing in a CMAR, like we do on a lot of our other projects to help value engineer that. Should expect that near the end of summer. And their doggy day out program just got off the ground. So you can come, take an animal from the shelter out on a public date. Go get them groomed, take them on a walk, introduce them to other dogs at the park. So really cool program for you to spend some time with an animal before you officially adopt it. So would encourage folks to go check out what sort of pups are out up there and maybe take one on a date. Had Casper Housing Authority meeting last Thursday. The architect for the rural school project is expecting a 67% overrun in costs due to factors like the tariffs, especially for Canada in regards to lumber and some of those. And then just in regards to the, you know, crackdown on illegal immigrants in the country and stuff. So they're just expecting huge overruns on that project. They are trying very hard to be open-minded and flexible and adapting to those conditions. Obviously doing some value engineering over there. They're going to make sure that space is renovated as frugally as possible. They're really good at operating on shoestring budgets. And that, that was one of the other, you know, conversations, recent conversations I was involved in that just makes me really. I got a lot of trepidation about things that we don't already have under contract, that we have estimates for that we don't have under contract. I've, you know, it's already been my experience on council that estimates do not hold up over time. A year or two later, you're looking at 20, 30% increase. And I just, I don't think that is going to go away. And so, again, just really wanting us to be as, Carter and city staff always present us very conservative budgets. But I think we need to be ultra-conservative in this environment, just because I, I get real sick of trying to scramble to find money for bids that come in way over what we originally think. And so I just, I think we should be really, really cautious here in the next year or two at least. And then lastly, there was a water main break on Oriole Court last Wednesday night around midnight. And it sounds like city crews worked all night, didn't get done until 5:00 AM in the morning, put down ice melt to make sure there was, nobody slipping on the ice and stuff. So I love hearing those stories. I was thankful to Jackie for passing that along to us and just props for those guys. Again, water mains, don't care what time of the day it is, when those things break at midnight, they need fixed right away. And so I really appreciate those people that are responding, especially on those cold windy nights like we've had the past couple of months. That's all I got. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Kyle, any updates?
Ted, traveling tours today. I won't be able to meet, make the March, March 18th.
Go whenever you'd like.
Regional water. So, but I thought it was good. A lot of great conversation, a lot of good things going on with the new director. She's got great energy and, you know, I think it would be a great direction for visit Casper and for the city. And obviously, kudos to their team with Compete Casper. It's going to take me a long time to figure that name out because, you know, start proud of who's the best. But, but that's great to have all those tournaments back. And, and I did learn today that CNFR were supposed to bid that in '27 or '26.
'26. I think it's.
So. You're the liaison.
Yeah.
So if, if you can kind of keep us on track, council, I know I'd, I'd appreciate it.
You betcha.
And lastly, but certainly not least, I don't, from what I've heard on property tax negotiations this morning, it didn't last very long. But I think we still need a good strategy, you know, wherever it ends up, if it's 25%, which is more manageable. Definitely not very manageable for districts, special districts, but in small communities. But, you know, what's our strategy? Because it does not look like there's going to be backfill. And then I do believe there'll be some good in-room discussion with folks I've talked to about different ways we can, municipalities, counties can go about raising funds. You know, nobody wants to talk about it, but after the great, great, great tour in yesterday and I just think that we've got to think outside the box and the sixth sense. And I don't know what I was thinking about when I talked about it yesterday, but of course Midwest and Edgerton have needs on, so. They've got lagoons, they've got different things. They've still got some wood, wood pipe, I believe, in the ground. So they'll be, I think they'll be right on board if we do county-wide. And so it's a complex issue with regional. And I know Tom and his crew is working diligently where the citizens don't have to come up with the full ask. So.
Good to have you back here.
Okay, I had public health on Thursday. They passed their body art regulations. They had a huge crowd of people for that size of room and they were all super polite. Very impressive to watch. No reason I can say that. Anyway, they also gave a building update. They are on schedule and under budget for the health department building. So I promised I would give them props for that. I know, right? And then Tuesday, I don't know if that was Monday. Yesterday, my ordinance meeting was postponed till next week. I didn't have that. I went toward the wastewater treatment plant. I told you guys, that's a good time. Didn't stink at all. It was fun. It was fun. Maybe not the most pleasant smelling, but I don't have anything this week because I'm going out again. So I'll see you next week.
Good travels.
Yep. Um, well, let's see. I guess it was. Yep. Um, well, let's see. I guess it was Friday last week, we had the Stuckenoff safety studies. That went all right. And then that was pretty much it. Nothing yet this week. Meetings got rescheduled to, pushed over into March. So. I have something for your consideration. I had a citizen reach out to me over the last week with some concerns about the dogs who have fallen into the river over at Marad with the ice and that sort of thing. So this individual was interested to see if there was anything that we could consider in terms of signage or temporary barrier for when the river is frozen over or whatever the case may be to, to improve safety in that area. So wanted to, I think there's been maybe two in the last week, dogs that have disappeared into the river. So just wanted to throw that out. I, I let the individual know that I would bring it up and see what you all thought. That was something to explore.
Is that something council would want? Do you want to put that on a work session? Or do you want to have, you would? Is council okay talking about Brad Park in that context in a work session? Carter, you're okay with that? Thank you.
That was one, one, that was one, one idea on the table. You know, additionally, you know, I think they were wanting something low-cost and temporized. It's a, it's not always, you know, year-round problem necessarily, but yeah. One of those signs. Whatever options would be.
Signs like a road sign.
Ice.
You're mean like that. Sign folks.
Fine.
Yeah, the price of gum and signs these days, man.
Yeah, yeah. It would not be a non-existent cost, certainly. But yeah, just be interested in folks who are maybe more familiar with that area and could provide more context about what, what might be effective, not just to do something, to do something, you know?
Vice Mayor?
Water treatment plant was fun time.
Vice Mayor, can we stop for a second? I keep forgetting.
Oh, yeah, you got somebody online there.
Carter keeps leaning over. Don't forget, Michael.
Michael, I completely fit spatial. My bad.
Put his picture right here.
It's, it's okay. I, I didn't, I had nothing. I just, I did want to add my thank you to the city crews for all the work they did with the water main break as well. So thank you again for that. That was great work. But otherwise, I have nothing this week. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Vice Mayor?
Okay. I just wanted to follow up on the citizen that talked about the traffic issues up in Centennial Hills at the elementary school. Has, have we come up with any thing we can do to, for that situation?
I need to follow up further. Yeah. So I'm honestly, I'm blanking on what that issue is to be totally candid.
Little tiny streets and too many people picking their kids up and they blocking the road.
Oh, gotcha. Sure.
Making a mess of traffic up there, picking up time and drop-off time. So.
Let me, let me get back.
Safety issue. So. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Easy week.
As I had mentioned, we did meet with the Council of Governments last Thursday. Had some good conversations. Vice Mayor couldn't make it. He wasn't feeling well. But Carter and I held down the fort. So we had some good conversations around mental health, talked about property tax a little bit. So which is of course, first and foremost, right, is what we've been talking about. Vice Mayor, myself and Carter will be going down to the WAM lunch with locals. We will also be chatting with, who are you meeting with? Ten? It could be me with the BLM to chat with them a little bit. So I'll give you updates on those as we, when we come back. So I'm looking forward to going down there. Let's see. Oh, the other one that I needed to ask is that we are moving forward with the interview for the Civil Service Commission. And we need at least three council members to be on that hiring committee, that interview committee, and no more than four. So I don't know who might be interested. Carter, yeah, Michael.
Can you reach out? Possible times, or is it set?
You know, Carter, if there's going to be times.
No, that would be something that would be contingent upon how many is available to meet with the candidates on an interview sort of format. So that, that is yet to be determined.
Great. Mr. Mayor, you can add me to that list if you want.
Anybody else? Just dying to be on it?
So is the application still? March fifth.
I can do it. I'll be a part of that. All right. The only other thing that I was, would say is that addressing the elephant in the room. I wanted to give you all's a head, heads up that I will be pending another letter to respond to some of the questions coming up and some of the information that have kind of surfaced over the last few days with property taxes and our message. I want to be clear that our message, and I'll make this clear in our statement, is, is about transparency and conversations around the ramifications of losing fifty percent property tax if it's cut. And so there was some information that got out, I think, or was presented out there that I think is pretty false and needs to be refuted. So I will be doing that. So please look forward. I think I'm going to try to get something out by tomorrow. And so if you have any thoughts or questions, please let me know. I'll be able to do that. I'll put that, putting that together.
On social media, the, some of the?
Yes. So there's been some responses, yeah, towards, towards the initial message that we had sent out. And so it's going to be a little bit of conversation rebuttal towards that. So. Trying to, trying to talk about facts is what we're working on. So if you have questions, comments, concerns, please let me know.
Thanks for taking one for the team.
It's a pleasure. I got to do the Civil Service Commission. Just tell my wife I never, I'm sorry. I just can't see you anymore. Just kidding. I see your old tattoo. Anything else? All right. Thank you, guys.